The subvention funds. When you cancel this contract, if the State of California reinstates the subvention fund, you will not be eligible to give money back from these properties for the county coffers. And to me, that doesn't make sense to me. Why would you eliminate an option of potential income? So, the State of California, or the California Farm Bureau, California Cattleman Association, the other entities have been working really, really hard with the State of California to get the subvention funds reinstated, and they are confident that it probably will happen in 2014. So with that said, canceling these contracts now or after the first year would eliminate the county from getting these monies. I think that's short sighted. And especially since the land use is pretty similar and the land restrictions are pretty similar. I think that they need to be looked at on a case-by-case basis, and of course, use your best business ability to make the decision. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to talk on the matter? Now we'll bring it back to the board.
Yeah, I appreciate what you just spoke about. It was very eloquent, very articulate, and kudos to you guys and your family. You guys have been very progressive in your approach to ranching and whatnot. You are a good role model for the rest of the ranchers in the county and the state, even in the nation, for the work that you guys have done to protect everything. And I don't know, I'm gonna, you bring up an interesting point of, you know, the conservation easement and the Williamson Act, et cetera. And I don't know, maybe that is something that we can, we can look at as a county, is if somebody goes into, takes on a conservation easement, they look at the value of that, maybe go ahead and exclude them from the Williamson Act for that period of time that the value of that conservation easement was, and then at the end of that, the landowner then may come maybe come back into the Williamson Act again. Because the reason why we're getting rid of this is almost a double-dipping in a public mind. And so, but maybe to keep that in there, maybe after the value of that conservation easement has used, has been used up versus Williamson Act, then they can come back into Williamson Act, and that might be something to maybe look at in the future. So, anyway, that's Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I appreciate Mr. Woods' comment as well, and congratulate him and his family for their long-term commitment to agriculture. But I think what we found when the state took the action of basically undermining its role in terms of the funding for the subventions, that on the county's role, we had a lot of small parcels that gravitated to there. And in terms of the dollar amounts involved, in terms of what subventions the county ultimately would receive if they restored the funding, is pretty negligible. And I think this board a few weeks ago determined irrespective of the fact, we're already sacrificing in the neighborhood of about $200,000 in tax revenues by allowing the contracts to remain in existence irrespective of what the state does. But I think the reality that I focused on, that I emphasized by my support by maintaining our involvement with the Williamson Act, and in some respects reversing my previous position over the last, previous couple of years, is that for every dollar that we give up, we actually save the property owners close to $4 in terms of taxes that they would otherwise be having to pay, which would go to the State of California, but they return around and use to pay for their school bill. So, you know, the attack on Williamson Act by the urban majority, you know, was designed to punish the rural folks for not, you know, acceding to their budget and other demands. And it's not just in the Williamson Act. They attacked the funding for our fairs, they have imposed the fire fees and a few other things, and it's part of that urban-rural conflict that we have statewide. But in the process of dealing with that, I think we identified that we did have a lot of small, you know, parcels that for one reason or another had collected, you know, on their rolls. And I think we set as a board, you know, with those minimums in terms of viability of standalone parcels, you know, to eliminate those, you know, whether we have the Williamson Act program funded by the state or not. And that's the process that we're going through. So, I realize 160 acres is probably an important piece of property, but in the larger mix of things, you know, it's an inconsequential amount. And that's why I think going through these, where we have the conservation easements in place, kudos for the ranchers to be willing to work with those folks in tying up future development rights on those particular parcels, and, you know, whatever tax advantage that is generated from that, so be it. But as far as the Williamson Act, to try to maintain the integrity of that as the program that was envisioned back in the mid-'60s when it was created by the legislature, you know, I think we need, we owe it to the program to maintain what those standards are. And I think in the process of what we have before here is we're kind of filtering out the last few pieces as the chairman has already indicated. So, I'm in favor of maintaining that integrity, and those small parcels will, you know, whatever happens to them, what happens to them. But I think in your family's case, you've shown that you're committed to maintaining them for the agricultural purpose and value that they've had and held for the last 160 years.
And with that, I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we find that the, this is eight, the item four under eight, that the contract does not meet the acreage requirements of Williamson Act Policy Section 1H, and determine that the recorded non-renewal notice is appropriate.
One second. And under discussion, yeah, I would like to say that this particular item, it isn't necessarily whether it's a small amount, this particular contract is 483 and a half acres. But, and I, and I do agree that Mr. Wood brings up some very good points, and by taking these actions, you know, we very well may be foregoing revenues. But I think, you know, we've had several meetings on this, and what's in front of us today is to act on a resolution that the board has passed that clearly lays out the guidelines. And based on the resolutions that the board has deliberated in public comment multiple times, I believe we need to take these votes based on what's in place as of today. But I really appreciate the perspective that you did bring because it is very valid, and maybe something that we didn't give, give thought to or overlook, but it is a very valid point. I would certainly like to look at that sometime in the near future because it does bring up a good point. But what's before us today and the resolutions that are in place, I, I'm gonna support the motion in the second. But with said, I would like to not forget about the good comments brought up by Mr. Wood. I also want to thank you, you know, for your commitment and commend you for your commitment to agriculture and your generations here. It's quite impressive to me. So, with that, will all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes unanimously. With that, we'll move on to item 9B.
This is for the Wood Cattle Ranch, and in this case, the conservation easement affects 368.05 acres. 1,988.6 acres remains after that, so there is sufficient acreage to remain in the program for the ownership of the Wood Cattle Ranch. And so, we have, therefore, we have option 4B to withdraw the notice of nonrenewal for the portion that isn't in the conservation easement.
Would anyone like to, from the public, like to speak on this? Now we'll bring it back to the board. It's a pleasure of the board.
Move 9B, direct staff, we've recorded notice of, with all those of nonrenewal except the ones requested by the landowner, the land included in the conservation.
One second. Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Pass unanimously.
Can I ask Darrell a question?
Sure.
Hey Darrell, all these conservation easements are a 10-year length in term?
What, I'm sorry?
The conservation easements that you sign on these properties are 10-year length in term?
No, they're in perpetuity.
Okay. I wanted to know.
Yeah. So the land, the land restrictions aside, you know, there really is anything that could break your contract, this report.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to item D10.
Item D10, the ownership is Pease Valley Ranch Partners, and the conservation easement for this, affecting this contract, is for all 1,262.14 acres, and therefore, it doesn't have the acreage outside of the conservation easement to meet the requirements of Resolution 12050.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to speak on the matter? Seeing that, we'll bring it back to the board. Back to the board.
I would move, Mr. Chairman, item 10, sub four, find that the contract does not meet the acreage requirements of Lassen County Williamson Act Policy Section 1H, and determine that the recorded nonrenewal notice is appropriate.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes unanimously. We will move to item 11D.
Okay, this is for Darrell and Kelly Wood, 2005 Revocable Trust, and Dallas Wood and Ramsey Wood as the ownership configuration. And the conservation easement for this also affects all 1,360.1 acres, and the report cannot meet the acreage requirements that have been established by Resolution 12050.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to comment on this item? Seeing that, we'll bring it back to the board. It's a pleasure of the board.
Move number four, find that the contract does not meet the requirements of Lassen County Williamson Act Policy Section 1H, and determine that the report, nonrenewal notice is appropriate.
Second. We have a first and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion passes unanimously. That will move us on to D12.
Yes, and this is the one at the beginning that Mr. Anderson was speaking to. This was nonrenewed because it did not meet, the assessor gave us, it was on the list, it did not meet the acreage requirements. We executed a notice of nonrenewal. The landowner has protested it. They have 240 acres, but the information at the time was that they did not have active irrigation. I have talked to Ken. There is evidence that there is irrigation. I wanted to read into the record an email from Ken Bunch yesterday. He says, "I have received the current status of the Anderson property. The well reportedly delivers at least 1,955 GPM. Fields have been planted irrigating crops, and the owner states that they will continue to improve the property. Miss Anderson states that they will be able to deliver adequate irrigation water to 100 acres on their parcel." So therefore, based on that, you know, there's, we have 4B is an option to withdraw the notice of nonrenewal in its entirety because this information indicates that it could meet the requirements of Resolution 12050.
Thank you. And I have, we'll bring it back to the public, and I have us start off with a speaker card on the matter from Cheryl Anderson.
Hi. Mostly I was just gonna make myself available if you had any questions about this. We bought this 240. It was a fixer-upper. So, we have been doing that diligently. We have about 100 acres in now, and we have a very nice well. And hopefully in the years to come, it will continue getting better. Do you have any questions?
I don't think so.
No? Okay.
Well, you know, I have a question.
Maybe?
I mean, this is an annual thing, so it's, for the record, is that you're, you're intent to maintain this irrigation activity for, you know, is it just now because of this proceeding, or is it for perpetuity?
No. The fields are already planted and waiting to come up. And we also run livestock on the permanent pasture that we have also irrigated, and we're still here.
That's what I just want to know, is this is a serious intent?
No, this is, yes.
For that kind of water flow, you got, you got a good valve.
Yes.
It'd be a shame not to use it.
Which is why we bought the fixer-upper.
Good question. With that, Mr. Chairman, I guess it would be, yeah. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing that, bring it back to the board. It's a pleasure of the board.
Yeah, I would move that we identify the right language for it, and let's see.
D10, it's in 4B.
Find that the, okay, 4B, I can see it there. Find that the said contract substantially complies with the Lassen County Williamson Act policies and procedures as outlined in Resolution 12050, and direct staff to record a notice of withdrawal of the notice of nonrenewal upon the assurances, and I'd like to add to that, upon the assurances of the property owner that they plan on maintaining viable irrigation activity.
Okay, can I maintain?
Maintaining a viable irrigation activity on the property.
Would, would those assurances come with letters?
No, the verbal statements in the minutes is enough to be, I mean, down the road in, you know, two years, five years, 10 years, if it, you know, goes fallow and it's not being irrigated, then obviously the staff could come back and say, you know, that the effort's not there, and then we could take up the action that was before, so to speak.
Very good.
I'm glad you're there. Do it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we have a first, is there a second? We have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes unanimously. And I believe that concludes the Williamson Act.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Do we have this expression right every year? Does, we go through this every year?
This is the first real one. This is something that started two years ago.
Okay.
I don't think we, this is the first time we've had something like this.
Okay. I was wondering. I was watching about that, he's educated, no, so it's a little bit surprising.
Yeah, and this is a culmination of about a two-year process.
Okay.
Hold on.
I'm looking for all these sheriffs out here. Need to get back to them.
They're loitering in the hall.
Yeah.
That would be the H, five and six.
Five and six. Take those out. We don't need three of them out. If they're getting bored, I can take them. What about you, John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Vino, Under Sheriff, we have two items in front of the board. The first one for your consideration is, it's a three-part item. The first piece is to accept a donation from the Lassen County K-9 Association in the amount of $7,310. And if you accept the donation, then we would ask that you increase the sheriff's budget by that same amount, $7,310. And finally, with that $7,310, authorize the purchase of a law enforcement K-9 from Left Coast K-9, which was the vendor that provided the lowest quote for a law enforcement K-9. So these are all tied together. And then the following item, of course, the training is, of course, directly tied to the purchase. If, if you move forward with five, then the training is a requirement to get the dog post-certified so it can hit the road. We came today, Mr. Chairman, with a full-on presentation where you, obviously, so the sheriff could talk to you about the benefits of K-9, why a K-9, the addition of a K-9 would be important to the sheriff's operations, with Deputy Brandon Vincent, who is, would be the K-9 handler, who could talk to you specifically about why the dog in question is the best dog of all the dogs that were quoted, to make the purchase, and all of the work that Brandon's been doing. And we also brought Monty, who can talk to you from the perspective of the K-9 Association and as a local business owner, who's a major supporter of the program. This has been more than two years in the making, gentlemen, to get this in front of you today. We recognize your time is precious, especially today, you have a ton, you have a ton of work this morning and a ton to do this afternoon. But we didn't want to shortcut. This is a major policy statement to talk about the addition of a law enforcement K-9. So, we want to leave this to the pleasure of the board. If you want to probe that or talk about the various questions about the program, what it took to get here, we certainly appreciate the commitments the boards already made. Maude, Marty, and Rick Hague worked through a lot of this with the bargaining unit to get this started, to get things built into the MOU with the Deputy Sheriff's Group to start this ball rolling. All of the work with County Council's Office to try and define a relationship with the nonprofit K-9 Association, how to deal with the donation, how to deal with this donation turned into a real property that would, that would hit the road with the county. So there's a ton of information. This is not just as simple as a purchase of a dog and a training item, but we want to leave it to the pleasure of the board and how much you want to, you want to probe this.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I want to say I'm a big fan of this program, and we've had similar programs in the past that have had success, and for various reasons, they've always been way, and I think familiar with the fact that this is something they've been working on. And just in the discussions I've had, I'm fully confident, we could take the time, maybe at some point, once the dog is, is here and the training is done, it'd probably be a good thing to have Officer Vincent come back and, you know, give maybe the program we have there. But I'm fully in favor of that, of accepting the donation, amending the budget, appropriating the money, and authorizing the training and go forth with that. And to me, that would be my purpose.
We got a second?
I'll second.
Most of you second. Any more discussion? Chairman?
With this, I mean, is dogs, with this money, does that come with bulletproof vests for the dogs? You see that on some of these dogs and whatnot, or is that?
Actually, Aaron Brandon could talk to you in great detail about some of the community support from the donation of, of the food, from donations for the vet care, donations of bulletproof vests. The K-9 Association's going to buy the, basically onboard kennel that goes in the, in the patrol vehicle to house the dog. But Brandon's got vendors lined up to take care of everything we can foresee at the moment with, it's all coming from community support donations.
Do you have to get insurance on this dog? Provided if he gets to shop for replacement?
We have vetted this with Trendell. I couldn't tell you yet what, I just talked with Mr. Egan about that last week to find out if that will have any bearing on our, on what our liability insurance will be moving forward. Clearly, there are some major benefits from a liability standpoint for us, for the county, for our offices, for building searches, or trying to find contraband, or weapons, or things of that nature. We have every confidence that this will help lessen our risk in some regard, but clearly there's some potential for risk anytime you put a K-9 in the field that might, that might have to retrieve a bad guy.
And one last question. You saw this dog, he's going to be a public servant. Is he gonna fall into the Affordable Care Act?
Fortunately, some of the good local vets are willing to donate care to this, to the dog to keep him healthy and keep him on the road for us.
Anything more?
Just one question. The training is to take place in Red柳, January 20th and February 21st, so would it be possible maybe in March, schedule to have the officer and the animal and all the community partners and so forth maybe come back and maybe run an agenda that's not quite so packed? We could really appreciate what this is about. Is that possible?
Absolutely. Any more of you guys?
John, have you chosen the animal?
The dog is picked.
And what's his name?
Brinks.
Brinks, Brink's security.
I'm gonna look.
Is that INX?
I'm gonna look him up.
It's, okay, Left Coast K-9.
Yeah, I've got it.
Oh, awesome.
B-R-I-N-X.
B-R-I-N-K-S.
Yes, okay.
Sheriff, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I think, obviously, this has been a ton of work for our staff. I'd like to commend Brandon. You know what I tell my people, if they want to see something happen, that they're gonna have to put in some work because we're all busy people and trying to build a new project. They can't just float an idea and expect us all to do all the work behind it. And Brandon, he's been hard, put a ton of work into this, so I think it's, we need to commend him. County, you know, Marty and Reddick did a great job helping, helping us. Like John said, there was a lot of work related to the MOU. We didn't do, we did have some, some successful programs in the past, but they really didn't have the proper foundation. And when we committed to doing this project, we wanted to make sure we did it right. So we, it's, it's an important tool for us to have in our community. And it was the work of all our people that was, that made that happen. And then also, Monty from Treats, you know, he's been the spearhead of the fundraising, and this wouldn't be possible without his good work and the donations from our good people out there in the community. So I think those things are just so important to mention here today and recognize, so. I think that's it.
I just have one, one last thing I want to add to this here. Now that we have the animal selected and there is a name for it, one thing for him, for the dog, you know, we've had several programs in the past. One thing that we have to appreciate and understand is both Brandon, probably more so than any of the rest of us, I mean, it's gonna be his dog, and you're gonna have a bond with that dog that will not be surpassed by anybody. The community, this program is large, is gonna embrace that service animal, much like they embrace a lot of major sports figures or people who are, you know, famous in Hollywood and whatever. I know a few years back, we had a, one of the K-9 units was Zeus, and Zeus became extremely popular with the young kids, I mean, to the point where everybody in town felt they owned that dog. So I hope you are prepared for the celebrity that you're gonna enjoy, but more importantly, that Brinks is going to enjoy. And if anything, if anybody messes with that dog, believe me, they're messing with the community as a whole. And I think we need to understand and appreciate the significance of that. And I'm looking forward to the fact that we'll have that as part of our community. And it's a great thing that a lot of people will embrace, the young people in particular will be embracing that animal, and hopefully will achieve the goal of deterring the crime that he's trained for.
We could go on and on, but.
Mr. Chairman, is your question five and six?
Oh.
What's the major purpose?
It's primarily gonna be a protection, for patrol protection and drug detection.
That's what I was hoping to hear.
Obviously, we have a significant drug problem, and it's always good to have a dog that can help us out in different sort of cases, you might have barricaded subjects, someone from the police.
We should include it all, man.
Any more questions, Mr. Sheriff?
The second.
The second was, yeah. Okay? Oh, may I say aye? I suppose, say no, I have, so.
Mr. Chairman, Monty, on behalf of the K-9 Association, has a check.
We need a recorded forfeit vote on that association.
Oh, yeah, because we are, we need magic, yeah.
I messed up. Madam clerk, will you pull the board?
Supervisor Chapman.
Aye.
Supervisor Alba.
Aye.
Supervisor Wassah.
Aye.
Supervisor Hammond.
Aye.
Supervisor Byer.
All right. Now we go on to six, Travis.
That was all together?
Yeah.
Now he, he did bring a check to present to the county.
He wants a picture.
He understands, you gotta do a picture.
So you gotta do a picture.
There you are.
You're short, you're getting up front.
Oh.
Take a picture.
Never mind.
Look over here, John, now.
All right, there you go.
It's in the middle. Compared outside.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
As long as it burns, gonna show up in a bigger picture.
Eat your foot, Greg. Can we take it seven? Is that here?
Yeah. Okay, then do that, seven. Stage seven, we can take up.
Members, this is just a report to the board to comment if any, discussions that we had with all the occupants of the storage warehouse, the work space, do you think we have a viable plan to make some interim moves for the use of that vacant space? The cabling of the storage house works, the expenses will be relatively minimal. I mean, such things as cutting a door from the front office back to the abandoned, or the district attorney's space. And so, do you think we have a viable plan for the assessor's office on keeping it in the basement and more to that?
On that point, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask Mr. Nicol, you know, I think that's okay, but for, I would say, a good 20 years, we've been a fairly clearly documented track record of the need of getting, for environmental reasons, getting the employees that were in the basement, you know, especially in the assessor's office and that workspace, out of the basement to more suitable locations. I understand the employees aren't interested in making the move. That's fine for right now, but I think for the purpose of the county's interest, I think we need to have a
But I think for the purpose of the county's interest, I think we need to have a waiver of, of interest in moving signed by those people so that down the road, if there is a cause of action brought forth, you know, the, the opportunity to move them was there and they chose not to move so that it's, you know, it clearly defines it so they can't come back with a grievance later on. And we have had employees in the past that have worked in that space that have health and other issues that were.